14, 2022, called here to order. And we have stated to me, this public hearing is being pursued to section four, six, four of the government act. What we consider as only amendment by law thirteen eighty two three. This meeting is open to the public via Zoom and all representation to council for the public record. This meeting is being webcast live and will be archived on the town website. At this public hearing, all persons wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. However, I ask that person wishing to speak or asked to virtually raise their hand and it will be unmuted. Before commencing with the remarks, please state your name and address. When addressing council, please restrict your remarks to the matters contained in the bylaw. Comments received today on the public by law are contained on the town's website at oliver.ca. Forward slash public hearings, anyone wishing to review those comments is invited to do so. I'll ask the director of development services to outline the bylaw.
Thank you, worship. I'll share my screen. The subject property is lots five and six, K P six, four, zero, four, three, and it's written regards to zoning amendment by law thirteen eighty twenty three. And it's a public hearing. In two thousand and fifteen, the subject properties were rezoned from residential medium density to residential low density. By zoning amendment by law thirteen fifty zero three. In two thousand and eighteen, preliminary approval was issued by the town for a twenty seven lot, single family subdivision. This subdivision did not proceed in its entirety with the developer instead subdividing nine lots along the west portion of Bent Brass Avenue in two thousand and twenty. Rather than subdividing the remainder properties into eighteen single family lots, the proposal is to rezone a portion to create ten duplex lots. With six single family lots resulting in a total of twenty six dwelling units. This equates to an increase of one point four or five times the previously anticipated density in the area. This map shows the subdivision plan, which has the six duplex lots that back onto Meadows Drive with four additional lots along Ben Grass Avenue. It's important to note that the subdivision will create upwards of fifteen to twenty new on-street parking spaces along Meadows Drive that did not exist at this time. These could practically be used by six of these lots that back onto Meadows, they could use these spaces as visitors or extra parking spaces. In terms of the O C P policies, the low-density residential policies state that the town of Oliver supports these lands for single-family dwellings, duplexes. Secondary suites, carriages, homes, accessory structures, manufactured home, parks. And other uses, the proposed zoning amendment is aligned with this designation. As duplexes fall into the low-density development category. Doesn't fall under medium density, but rather duplexes fall under low density. The residential policies of the O C P speak to prioritizing residential growth and infill within the town's boundaries over the extension of boundaries. These policies also speak to encouraging higher density forms of housing in single-family neighborhoods such as secondary suites and duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw.
Blair Patterson, I reside at six, five, five, four, Junegrass Street, Oliver, B C, which is part of this development, this small. This small. Plan community that is in question. First of all, I would like to thank Council, we could speak on behalf of our subdivision and our community. We have already submitted a heartfelt, our concerns to the town office, along with numerous others from our subdivision. Please take the time to read them as they are very important to us. Our small four-street subdivision has one point of entry and one point of egress. It is already seventy-four percent developed and populated by residents. This figure is based on a design plan submitted and approved by the town of Oliver. The original developer sold the remaining seventeen undeveloped lots as a package. The current plans had only been placed and was purchased by Constalking Developments, known to serve B C. Researching this company, there is not much information online. Its Facebook page says it has twenty-five years of experience. However, a work state B C registry check shows the company is not registered. The proposed amendment reduces twelve single-family lots to ten duplex lots. Along one side of Ben Grass Street. Creating twenty residents, increasing the density of that small area a hundred and sixty-six percent. Of her of the original plans. The concerns over this increase in density are primarily lack of adequate parking. Each proposed set residents has a single-car garage and driveway. The streets are less than standard width. And did this come with a variance? I don't know. There's an eight-point-three-meter-wide footprint for traffic flow. Which is less than what is shown on the proposed plans. It's less than a normal city street. This creates an extremely dangerous situation for emergency vehicles, snow removal, garbage pickup, and pedestrian safety. Presently, most homes in this subdivision have a two-car garage and driveway. The proposed footprints of the duplexes allows for little or no garden. Very little storage, except for perhaps in the single-car garage. And no secondary or visitor carpet, which currently has may have been addressed. But that's on Meadows. We understand the town's desire and need to attract young families and create housing. Twelve single-family homes built with young families in mind are upwakes, squishing twenty families under the same footprint. Constalking developers knew this property was on low density when they purchased the land. We bought and built here because it's low-density, single-family, non-strata subdivision. Now this company wants to change the plan of the community affecting all of us that make our home here. We know that increasing the density in a small area will create unsafe conditions. We urge the town townhouse to vote no to the proposed rezoning application. And to proceed with the original plan. Let the developer research properties such as two-ten Coop Avenue, a hundred and thirty-two multi-family site, already zoned appropriately. Thank you for your time, Larry and Georgina Patterson.
Thank you, Blair. I have a question to the director. Blair raises a good point that there's only one way to access and egress this property, which is a tremendous amount of houses here. I'm just wondering if there's a standard for that. I look just to the north. Where Willa Lynn is, and there's two accesses there, two egresses for probably a smaller amount of houses. This is definitely going to create a pinch point, especially at that one intersection, which is very, very close to Meadows Drive. Director.
Thank you through to the mayor. I mean, when the subdivision was was originally planned, that was the only access. I can't speak for. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I know that limiting the number of accesses to Meadows is important. Especially if you add another access from this development, that would be another access on a corner. Where where Meadows sort of bends, so it is more appropriate to direct the traffic to one intersection. And with the road improvements, there would be a proper turning lane that would be accommodated. So people could travel down Meadows to the north and go into the left signal lane and then make the turn. That would be a question beyond myself, though, whether or not there should be another access added to Meadows, but yeah, that's all I can answer. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify my question, I was really looking for if there's a standard of how many residences. Each having at least one, if not two vehicles coming out of one small room, which is already narrower than the standard because it's an R S four zone special. So that was kind of some information I wanted to put in. Thank you for your answers so far.
Yeah, so sorry, just to add, Mr. Mayor, I I couldn't answer if there's a certain number where another intersection is required, that would be more for a traffic engineer to answer that question.
Thank you. Again, I'll ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw?
I'm Lori Kingfield. My husband, Stephen, I built actual six bunch of house.
Lori, for just one second, just want to ask, Councilwoman Madison, Councilman, are you able to hear Council?
As long as they stick to the microphone, stay close to the mic as best as possible.
Sorry, Lori, I just wanted to.
We were the first home to be built in the Southland. I'm a retired Realtor. I never could only the older of London's Boston communities for seventeen successful years. I was the original Realtor representative of homes and lots for both Robert Nager and Alcarenters until I retired from the industry in twenty eighteen. Sorry, I don't call this people, so I'm gonna sound weird. I was told by both of these folks that the area would only be single-family units, and that is what I was hoping for prospective buyers. The prospective buyers for that area that I worked with were mostly semi-retired and retired folks that were looking for one level non-strata homes. There were very few young families that came and looked at the homes in the year. In my opinion, based on my personal experience with the Realtor in this area, multi-family homes tend to bring down the value of surrounding homes. And any buyers will buy in an area of multi-family dwell. It's quite common for these homes to be purchased by investors, and then they become renters. Without owner occupancy, it is quite common to see properties that are not maintained properly. The nature, the natural progression of family homes is for older folks that have raised their families. They don't need the larger homes any longer, so they move to an area like ours, and therefore their larger homes become homes to be owned by them. It also needs to be addressed that our roads are only just over eight meters wide, and if there is any street parking, they become narrow and congested. We have witnessed vehicles having issues with blocked roads. The garbage truck can even have problems accessing properties easily. I would imagine that this issue would also cause problems with emergency vehicles that may need to access the area. Most households nowadays have two vehicles. I've seen the proposed plans for the duplexes, and they have a single garage and single driveway. This is possibly forty new vehicles plus visitors having to be accommodated on the road system. And I can tell you right now that the garage will start to be used for living space, and that vehicles will be parked on the road. This also causes issues with snow removal on the roads as we experience this one. There are several other development areas in Oliver that are already set up for multi-family units. And are very dear to exist in multi-family homes that could accommodate two houses to be built there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Guys, is there anyone on Zoom that has their hand raised?
There's nobody with their hands raised, but we can definitely guess we have one person that's raised their hands. And as they raise their hands, Rochelle is moving them into my screen so that they can speak. So we'll just let you know, and so we have an Anil. McGannie that can speak. And then a Dave.
Okay, Anil, you like to provide some comments?
I have not muted.
Unmute yourself, Anil.
There. Hello. I'm not muted.
This is Dave. We're waiting for Anil to go first.
It's Dave.
Yes, Dave, we're just waiting for Anil.
Okay.
Anil, are you able to unmute, unmute yourself?
Maybe in the meantime, we'll let Dave go.
Okay, Dave, please proceed.
All right, can you hear me? I have no image saw and audio is pretty bad, so as long as you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm Dave Gillespie. I'm a resident at six, five, six, eight Bluegrass Street in the Meadows neighborhood. And I I agree with all the comments my neighbors have just said. And I just want to add to my comments that I'd mailed in that. We've got, I think, over forty-five families here in the Meadows that have invested over thirty million dollars building homes. In trust with the town that the zoning would and always would be, single-family homes. Many of our neighbors are either away for the winter or spending Valentine's Day focusing on their loved ones tonight. And they shouldn't have to be looking over their shoulders, defending our neighborhood from our town councillors who are considering breaking that trust. The developer has presented this concept as an affordable family housing. And in reality, this development will actually become transient workforce rental housing, I'm convinced. This rezoning is not compatible with our existing neighborhood. And contrary to the statements from the planner, there are other locations available that are much better suited for this type of housing development in Oliver. So by approving this rezoning, you've not seriously considered the impact that this will have on our neighborhood, and and I don't think you might care. You're not, I think you're selling zoning to get contributions from developers. This is not ethical, short-sighted, and it's unreasonable. Approving this rezoning today will create a Valentine's Day massacre and kill our neighborhood. And the families who invested in the Meadows will suffer for it. But we promise, depending on your choice, come next election, a council will either benefit from it or you'll pay for it. Thanks for hearing me out.
Is Anil still on the line?
I've just brought him over again. That seems unmuted.
What?
I would like to address again if I can, if there's time.
Okay.
Usually we go through the speaker list first.
Okay, we're having trouble with Anil being able to unmute. Okay. I'm going to, Dave, as as well as Blair, will go through the speakers and then you'll get a chance to add some additional comments, okay?
Thank you.
For a second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw? Nobody you, Ben?
Except for, well, Dave hasn't, his hand raised.
I'll go to a third time, I'll return, or a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw?
We heard back from Anil. He says he has no question. He's just listening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Blair?
I don't have to say anything. Anyway, to address the the actual building that has gone on in subdivision. In the past eighteen months, we built our house two years ago, moved in on Valentine's Day in twenty nineteen. In the past eighteen months, we were the first lot on Junegrass. In the past eighteen months, twenty-two lots have been sold, built on, and occupied as single-family dwellings in our subdivision. This shows that there is a need for this type of a planned development. Plans are in place, there's seventeen lots left. Twenty-two have been sold, built on, and occupied in the last eighteen months. That's not including ours. Then second, there is property within the town boundaries to address affordable multi-family homes. Plan as such as a development. Coop Avenue, six lots, a hundred and thirty-two sets, is what they're trying to sell right now. Between Salamander and Meadows Drive. West of Meadows, south of our subdivision, which is privately owned. All those could be considered. I'm just asking that we be proactive, not reactive to the town's housing solutions. Thank you.
Blair? Dave?
Hello?
Open.
This is Dave.
Yeah, you're up.
Oh, you want me to speak again?
Your hands up.
Oh, no, it's, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're good. Just because we're online, I'm getting on last for a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw?
Could I just say one more thing? Yeah, Dave here, Dave here. I just want to say that. Looking at that plan that is proposed, there are other creative options that could be available. And I I don't know when that time or place would be to bring that up at some other meeting or it's just. Something that, you know, there are other ways to do that. That I don't think have been considered.
I'll just ask you what you're what you're referencing, Dave, I'm not sure.
Well, it's just an idea I had. I'm a designer, and I looked at the plan and I said, you know, if if. If it. I I was talking to some of my neighbors. I said, you know, in my mind, yes, we have times to speak here. You're doing your due diligence to allow us to do this. But in my mind, your minds are already made up, and this will go through as proposed. And we're essentially peeing in the wind. And I said, if it does go through, and there are things that we could suggest that might make it better for us here in the Meadows and the developer and the town. Maybe it, maybe there are compromises that we could discuss, but I'm not about to do that because. Essentially, that's that's, I'll follow my sword presenting what my ideas are, but if it's gonna, if if. I don't know what, and I don't know the process. If you have this reading later on and you discuss this, then you have another opportunity to revisit it before the hammer drops. I would speak up at that point and say, well, if it's going through, maybe you should consider some of these ideas. That's all. I don't know what the timelines or procedures are, but.
Well, our process is to go through the public hearing and then later on in the regular reading, this item will be, will come up for a third reading, I believe. And we have a chance to discuss it. It's it is rare that it would go back to public hearing, but you never say never. And in response to your one comment, I would like to rebut that and say that I do take this matter very seriously. And I know all our councillor do take this matter seriously, and I know that anybody has made up their mind before coming to this public hearing. And with all due respect, treat us that way, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to speak?
Thank you, worship. I guess, knowing the process that's in front of us, I do have a question for Dave. And I would just reiterate the mayor's comments. I don't think anybody has come to this process with their minds made up. That's exactly what a public hearing is for and for all of the comments that we received over the last couple of days. So that we can gather feedback to make sure that we are making the decision that's in the best interest, not only of your neighborhood, but of the community as a whole. And so if you have ideas that you think would make this proposal more palatable. I'd be interested in hearing what they are, so that we do have all of the information and perhaps things that some of us have not thought about. Before making a decision one way or the other. So I'd appreciate hearing what those ideas are.
You'd like me to speak to them right now?
This is the opportunity, Dave.
Yeah, if I had a, if I could screen share, it'd be nice, but I, something's wrong with this system here I'm I'm on, and I have a drawing. Using the developer plans and essentially, I I I don't think it, that plan fits in our community. And I think it will always be a separate. Essentially, a neighborhood next to a neighborhood. It won't be, it's not compatible. So I think if it's not compatible.
Sorry.
Okay, so what my idea was, could you essentially, and I'm sort of. Interested to hear Randy say that you could park on Meadows Drive. Because my idea is take the plan as you have it and essentially make the houses faced. Ee, ee, east, not west, make them face, have them front on to Meadows Drive. Right? So now they're a community facing the street. And then have the developer build a nice large privacy fence along the backyards. And that would essentially separate that community from the Meadows.
Randy, Director?
Yeah, I drafted it out to see how it would fit, and I'm like, I'm not a, I'm not a designer, a lot designer or anything, but I thought, you know. You could have your cake and eat it too, I guess. And if it was done right, it could be maybe something that could be. Thought about rather than the way it is. It's not, it's, it's, it's not something we would agree to here in the community, the way it's presented, but.
Director, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I appreciate Dave's comment. What I would tell you is that any development that occurs along Meadows, the first thing we do is to try to eliminate the driveways off of Meadows. Meadows is a really busy road, and that's a bend in the corner, and you know how fast vehicles travel on Meadows. And to add six driveways where people are backing out of their driveway onto Meadows is is definitely not ideal. Many of the properties have covenants in some of the Chardonnay area, which prevent driveways from Meadows Drive. And and we definitely would not, from a traffic safety point of view, would not be ideal to have multiple driveways on Meadows. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, just come back with that is is if you're planning on parking there, then an turn lane. And you're going to do some changes to the roadway. Maybe you could have a a laneway with where you could access and and make it safer than it is right now. But I I it was just out of the box thinking, and it was something I would, I'd love to talk, show you my sketch, Randy, and say, hey, you know, is. Is it something that could work? And could it work, actually improve the concept? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else with their hand up? I see Blair here, but is there anyone else with their hand up? Pure that way.
No. No, there's no one.
Okay, Blair?
Yeah, I just want to address to what just Randy just said about, I'm sorry. I just want to address what Randy just said about the the area being on a corner exceptionally busy. Is that the right place to put parking? You know, like, it's too full. You can't put driveways there. Should you be putting parking there? And I'm just asking this because, yeah, as as, you know, if you flip the townhomes, then the front becomes the back, back is front. And unless you're going to run the services along Meadows. Then it's not going to work. And driveways, well, if you want young families in there. If that's the front yard, well, the kids are going to be running out into the street, which is exceptionally busy again. But you flip them back to the inside, and that street's going to be busy. You're putting twenty homes on ten lots in a very small footprint. You know, I'm concerned about the kids that are going to be in the neighborhood, the traffic that's going to be in the neighborhood. It needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Blair. Director, do you have your hand up? No?
No, I apologize, sorry.
Okay. I guess for the final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw? Hearing none, seeing none, I declare the public hearing on this by. Hearing none, seeing none, I declare the public hearing on this bylaw is closed. Keep all questions all in favor. Our adjourn, thank you, Blair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Second public hearing. Called to order, public hearing in council town of Oliver on Monday, February fourteenth. While this public hearing is ordered, this public hearing is convened pursuant to section four-six-four of the Local Government Act in order to consider zoning amendment bylaw thirteen eighty-two. This meeting is open to the public via Zoom and all representation to council, on record. This meeting is being webcast by and will be archived on the town website. At this public hearing, all persons wishing to speak will be given an opportunity to be heard. However, I ask that persons wishing to speak are asked to virtually raise their hand, and they will be unmuted. Before commenting on your remarks, please state your name and address. In addressing council, please restrict your remarks to matters contained in the bylaw. Comments received today on the proposed bylaw are contained on the town's website at oliver.c forward slash public hearings. Anyone wishing to review those comments is invited to do so. I will now ask the record of all the services, services to comply above, outline the bylaw amendment. Director?
Thank you, worship. I'll share my screen. Are you able to see the slideshow there?
Yeah.
I can't tell what screen is showing sometimes. All right, the subject of this public hearing is in relation to four-nine-one Salamander Avenue and its relation to zoning amendment bylaw thirteen eighty-twenty. The applicant's proposing to construct a six-unit townhouse development on the subject property comprising of two separate three-unit buildings. Each unit features a carport and living space on the main floor with two bedrooms and a den on the second floor. Given that the maximum floor ratio proposed exceeds the maximum allowed under the R M one zone, a rezoning to R M two is required. The subject property is also located within the multiple-family DP area and requires approval for the design and to address landscaping requirements. This map shows an ortho. It's an existing single-family dwelling located at the back corner of the lot that will be demolished as part of this process. This is a map that shows the site plan, with the entry into the development being from Salamander Avenue, a one-way, and then you exit out onto Park Drive. Three units here outlined in brown, and then the three units at the front. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I declare the public hearing open and ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw.
No hands are raised at this point.
Okay. For a second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw? For a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak further to the proposed bylaw, proposed bylaw? Hearing none, I hereby declare the public hearing on this bylaw is closed. Look for a motion to the chair. One and second. All questions all in favor? Ooh. Motion is carried.
So we are going to end this meeting and start a new one for the regular here.
Okay.